This is all cool in here. It feels good today, huh? Good evening. I'll call to order the workshop for the Arvada City Council for September 23rd, 2019, and do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Very good. We've got four different items on our workshop agenda tonight. The first is Neighborhood Engagement and Resilient Arvada Updates. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're going to have our Neighborhood Services team, I believe, we're going to start with Anessa. Anessa, what's that?
Ann.
Ann Karis. Anessa Karis from our Neighborhoods program will make the presentation.
We always look forward to these. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Karis Canalis. I'm the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator, so I manage all of our neighborhood programs at the city. And tonight, Anessa and I are very happy to share with you a presentation that we gave at the 2019 Neighborhoods USA Conference, which is known as NUSA. Every year, this conference brings leaders from all across the world to work together on building and sustaining strong neighborhoods. So our conference session focused in particular on how knowing your neighbors makes you more prepared in an emergency. And you've all heard, Anessa and I, talk about a lot of these ideas before, but it was new for the NUSA audience that we presented to. Tonight, we will also share a few updates on our programs, things that you can look forward to hearing about over the next few months. So I will pass it off to Anessa to begin our conference presentation.
Thank you, Karis. My name is Anessa James, and I'm the Community Resilience Coordinator here at the city. I direct all of our resilience and emergency management programs here. And so although Karis and I operate separate programs at the city, our two positions really share a common purpose. We both work together to build social ties and social connections across our city. And we do this to increase the resilience of our people to unexpected shocks, stresses, and change. So our partnership is really unique in a time when emergency management is typically pretty separate from neighborhood services, and we collaborate together in order to be more effective in a rapidly changing world. So tonight, Karis and I are here to share some very good news about how communities tend to recover from disasters. The good news is, when it comes to disaster recovery, money isn't everything. Strong social connections really act as super glue that holds our communities together in times of crisis. So even if a community doesn't have available funds for large mitigation projects or extensive risk reduction efforts, we find that our communities can become more resilient by spending resources we do have on fostering relationships between neighbors. So today, Karis and I are going to share some of the strategies that we've developed to grow a culture of neighbors helping neighbors in Arvada. We will also share how we've been measuring and tracking our progress here through the lens of community resilience. So we hope that you'll walk away tonight with a better understanding of why relationships matter in the context of disasters, how to build community support for resilience, and how to design metrics that are meaningful. So before we get too far into our talk, I want to take a moment to address the elephant in the room, and that elephant is the word resilience. So I get asked all the time, what does resilience mean? So to many, resilience is a term that's starting to feel a little bit like sustainability. So here's Arvada's definition of resilience. "Resilience is the ability of a community to rebound, positively adapt, and thrive in the face of change." So it's different from sustainability, but it's quite related. So sustainability at its core is really about stability, right? It's about maintaining a certain level or state of being over time. But we all know the first rule of life: the only constant is change. So resilience comes from the field of ecology. In the 1970s, ecologists were really interested in what happens to our natural systems when they're disrupted. So what happens when a change occurs at a level so dramatic that the system can't maintain the status quo? So this is what resilience is really about. It's about change, big change, so changes that happen when our world gets completely knocked off balance. So this is a continuation of our city's definition of resilience. When faced with adversity, we are able to maintain our quality of life, our healthy growth and economic development, and our sense of place. So notice here that we chose to use the word adversity and not disaster. So again, this concept of resilience is about change. It's about being better. It's about a constant pursuit of improvement, no matter what occurs. So it's important for me to mention here that there's no one-size-fits-all to this type of work. So not only is it critical that a community define resilience for itself, it's also important that relationship building is conducted in a way that resonates strongly with community members. So I'm going to turn it back over to Karis now, and we're going to talk a little bit about the power of neighboring and how the city of Arvada uses neighboring as a major tool to develop resilient neighborhoods.
Thank you, Anessa. So I want you all to just take a moment and reflect on instances in your personal life, stories that maybe you've heard from friends or family, or stories that you've heard on the news about a time of crisis or a disaster. What did you notice? You may have seen neighbors coming together in the immediate aftermath, cleaning up fallen tree limbs after a tornado, shoveling out their neighbors after a major blizzard, rescuing people and pets in personal boats after a hurricane. In times of need, we often turn to our neighbors first. You spend more time in proximity with them than you do with most of your friends or family. They can be some of our most powerful assets and most immediate assets during a crisis. So keep that in mind as we continue our presentation. So tonight, we're going to talk about Neighbors Connected: Neighborhood Strong, and this is a program that was strategically designed to foster neighborhood connections and thereby increase our community's resilience. We'll highlight a number of the tools that we developed that specifically promote neighboring, including the Neighborhood Leader Network. We're also going to talk about communication best practices, like how we can creatively engage our community members and provide incentives that encourage participation and ownership over this process. We will also show how we use the program to develop or to define neighborhood-scale resilience and how we've been working to build and measure human connections at that neighborhood level. But first, Anessa is going to give you some context on the why we're doing this.
All right. So before I get too far into the why, I want to talk about Arvada. So our city looks a lot like many other mid-sized American suburbs. We started as a farming community, and that history is still really important to our identity. But we're growing, and Arvada is changing. Our big-city issues today are similar to those of other rapidly growing suburban areas, so traffic, aging infrastructure, housing affordability and homelessness, tensions between the new and the old, the haves and the have-nots. So in September of 2013, the Colorado Front Range experienced a massive flooding event. This event triggered a federal disaster declaration. Lives were lost, and many Colorado communities are still recovering from the event six years later. So here in Arvada, we did have some infrastructure damage, so to our bridges, our culverts, and our roads. We were involved in debris removal activity as well, but compared to our neighbors, there weren't many impacts in our city. So Boulder, Longmont, Lyons, and Loveland, these Colorado communities were hit hard, and they learned some tough lessons. Their culture was really changed by the flood event. So Arvada, however, emerged from the event relatively unscathed. So today, although we are exposed to a number of hazards, including floods, wildfire, extreme heat, in some ways, the fact that we have experienced very few disasters in the past puts us at a disadvantage compared to other cities that experienced disasters frequently or in the recent past. So think about Houston or New Orleans, states like Florida and California. In a city like ours, one with many competing near-term priorities and a very limited history of disaster events, it's sometimes hard to tell a compelling and personal story about why building resilience is essential to our community. In a city like ours, in order to be prepared for change, we must frame resilience as something that's intimately connected to our broader community visions and our goals. So we'll talk more about this, but before I do, let's talk a bit about disasters and how communities tend to recover from them. So this is a map of the billion-dollar weather and climate-related disasters that the U.S. experienced in 2017. So there were 16 distinct events in 2017. So here's a map of 2018. There were 14 separate billion-dollar events in the U.S. in 2018. Although this number is lower than it was in 2017, it's still considered a very active year for disasters. So take a look at Colorado here. Our state experienced two billion-dollar hail events in June and August. So 2019 is still in progress, and as of early July, there have been six separate weather and climate disaster events with losses exceeding $1 billion each. So since the 1990s, the U.S. has been seeing more large disaster events like these, and the events are costing communities more money than ever before. So this upward trend is due to a combination of factors, including increased exposure of our infrastructure and climate change. So after a disaster hits, we almost immediately enter the recovery phase. So getting back to life as usual is often our goal. The concept of resilience pushes back on this a little bit. It encourages communities to build back better, to find a new and improved normal. So there are several common theories about what key factors drive the ability of a community to recover from a disaster successfully. So one of the most common recovery theories we hear about is money. So did you have insurance? Was FEMA there for you after an event? Did you have money saved and available before the disaster hit? So this is the theory that money, including your personal wealth and funding from FEMA, insurance, and other outside aid organizations, will drive a faster recovery for your community. So another common recovery theory is about governance, so how well-governed the area is, including processes for decision-making and implementation. This theory really stresses that a healthy system of governance leads to better disaster recovery outcomes. Another common recovery theory is about the level of damage. So this is the belief that the more powerful the disaster, so a massive earthquake or a wildfire, will have a slower recovery process than a smaller-scale one. So think about a blizzard. So population density is another predominant recovery theory. So this is the narrative that densely populated areas and cities are slower to recover than rural areas. And a final and very commonly cited recovery theory is related to inequality. So this is the theory that social-economic disparity or stratification in a community will slow recovery down. So over the last decade, an increasing body of research has shown that although these five common recovery theories I just discussed do explain some of the differences between how various communities recover from disasters, they are not as important to recovery as social capital is. So what you're seeing here is a quote from Dr. Daniel Aldrich. He's a political science professor and one of the leading researchers and authors in the field of resilience and disaster recovery. I'll give you a minute to read his quote. So Dr. Aldrich has conducted field research in post-disaster environments in the U.S. and abroad, so including the 2011 earthquake, tsunami, and nuclear meltdown in Japan, and hurricanes Harvey, Irma, and Maria. So Aldrich became really interested in disaster recovery and social networks after he and his family lost their home during Hurricane Katrina. So although, so through Dr. Aldrich's research and others, it has become increasingly clear that strong human connections are one of the most important attributes of a resilient community. Moreover, the most dominant theories about recovery have been found to be focusing on the wrong kinds of ideas. So take a moment to think about how the five recovery theories I just discussed may have directly or indirectly influenced your plans for your community, for your business, and for your family. How have these concepts shaped how you talk about being prepared? Now consider how you might plan or talk about big changes differently, understanding that social networks are the most important factor in determining whether or not you have a successful recovery. So interestingly, in addition to the increase in the frequency and cost of large disasters in our country, there's also evidence that meaningful connections between people are decreasing across the United States. So patterns of living and working are less stable than ever before. Transitions between our life stages are less socially and geographically rooted. Public health officials, policymakers, psychologists, they're all recognizing and raising alarm at the negative impacts that widespread social isolation and mistrust are having on the overall health of our communities. So a lack of social cohesion, a lack of sense of community, this is a challenge of our time that spans disciplines. The impacts touch public health, law enforcement, emergency management, and democracy itself, and it's a challenge that we're all up against, in addition to the increasing risks we face from hazards. So recent research on community risk reduction is showing us that the traditional disaster-preparedness programs run in the United States have not adapted yet to reflect a new understanding of the essential nature of social networks for resilience. So we really need to do better here. We need to explore what Emergency Preparedness 2.0 looks like. So during our conference presentation, Karis and I asked our attendees this question: what might emergency preparedness look like in your community? So in Arvada, we've defined emergency preparedness 2.0 by our focus on social connections through neighborhood-level engagement, leadership, and identity-building. And so Karis is now going to talk in more detail about the community-built program that has given our neighborhoods a way to connect and build relationships, convene with the city and build trust, and evolve their communication strategies around the concept of resilience.
Thank you, Anessa. So early on in developing our Neighborhood Engagement Program, we invited residents as prospective neighborhood leaders to join us for a brainstorming session. We gave them the opportunity to design the program and to identify which elements would be most impactful to developing great neighborhoods. So even the name Neighbors Connected: Neighborhood Strong was chosen by the community. They clearly prioritized having a program that fostered connections between neighbors to make stronger neighborhoods. And having that community ownership over the process helped to build trust between residents and the city because it showed the value that we place on their contributions. So we use this program as an umbrella for a number of our existing neighboring tools, such as the block party trailer, our movie equipment, our home improvement projects, and our neighborhood grants. And we really see the city's role as a convener and a provider of resources to promote neighborhood connections. So one of our most successful elements of our Neighborhood Engagement Program was the formation of the Neighborhood Leader Network. Now, this is a group that is made up of neighborhood leaders from all over the city, which meets quarterly to hear from guest speakers and to learn from each other on how to create and maintain those vibrant, active neighborhood groups. It's a strong platform for collaboration and for the presentation of available resilience resources, such as our Talent Bank, which I'll go into later in this presentation. They also are able to offer neighboring challenges, and they're all doing this for the same reasons: to build great neighborhoods where neighbors can connect. And having a group that can learn from each other and see each other's experiences makes this all so much easier. Now, one of the most popular initiatives that spawned from the Neighborhood Leader Network was organizing front yard happy hours with your neighbors. It's something that's so simple but really effective in taking that first step. And it's so important to make this all really easy. Another very successful element of our Neighborhood Engagement efforts is our annual Neighborhood Improvement Grant. Now, this is a larger-scale grant targeted at supporting more significant, long-term improvements to a neighborhood. And so for the first time this year, Anessa and I partnered our programs to create a new theme for the grant called "Resilient Neighborhoods from Porches to Parks." Now, this was really a targeted effort to promote the creation of central gathering spaces that neighbors could take ownership over. So if ever there is an emergency, community members can gather in these places, and they can get updates from law enforcement personnel or emergency personnel. They can share resources, and they can feel that sense of community that will ultimately help them to recover faster.
So we've spoken a lot tonight about the benefits associated with connected neighbors, but how do we really measure the impact of this work? So said another way, how do we quantify the resilience dividends of neighbors connected? So at the city of Arvada, we take a very data-driven approach to decision-making and budgeting. This has come from years of practice, leadership, and necessity, and measuring our results is more important than ever. Resource availability is changing. Additionally, the federal posture towards public assistance and disaster recovery is changing. So by looking closely at communities who have recently experienced disasters, we can learn important lessons about how to prepare and about how to bake resilience into everything that we do. So we've built our resilience strategies around research conducted in New Jersey after Superstorm Sandy. Although hurricanes are not a hazard that our community will face, we have been especially interested in the data collected from New Jersey because the researchers were focused specifically on neighborhoods and on understanding why some neighborhoods recovered from the same storm faster than others. What the post-Sandy research tells us is that post-disaster social networks mirror pre-disaster conditions, and that strong connections between neighbors are one of the most important factors in driving a fast and successful recovery. So building on the method used in the post-Sandy neighborhood study, we've created a social cohesion index. So this index allows us to measure social cohesion and sense of community at the neighborhood scale here in Arvada. We collect our data through a series of surveys that we circulate two times a year, once in the spring and again in the fall. The survey assesses key indicators of social cohesion, including spirit of volunteerism, face-to-face contact with neighbors, and how well our residents know those who live around them. So this is an example on the screen of a few of the questions we ask our residents in our survey. The neighborhood survey is currently open, and you can find it on SpeakUpArvada. That's speakup.arvada.org. So this neighborhood survey data is coupled with additional data we get from the city's biennial community survey, and together, the information is used to calculate a social cohesion score for each of our neighborhoods in Arvada. The end result is a score that we use to measure the strength of each neighborhood's social connections. Additionally, the index scores can be mapped using GIS software, and we can then overlay other municipal data to identify spatial relationships. So this method allows us to identify neighborhoods that are feeling really connected. We can also identify others that might need some extra support. This is a tool for making data-driven decisions about resource allocation, best practices, and areas of improvement. So at this point in our conference presentation, we challenged our audience members to think about how they might measure resilience-related concepts in their own cities. This is a new and emerging field, and we encourage them to think about what data they might already have available to start building a metric for resilience. So here at Arvada, we are constantly improving our processes, and this work is really no different. So I like to use the crawl-walk-run analogy. So three years ago, we were crawling. We were simply counting the number of block parties that we were holding a year in order to measure our performance. Today, we're walking. We have a survey, a process, and an index that paints a picture of community resilience. And as we continue to refine our work, we will soon be at full implementation and running.
So none of this would matter if we can't get the community to buy into the importance of building those relationships with their neighbors. So to maximize our impact and to make participation exciting, we focused on using engaging social media content and campaigns like "Won't You Be My Neighbor" from Mr. Rogers. And we use those content and campaigns in conjunction with popular neighboring tools, like our block party trailer and our Know Your Neighbor grants as prizes. So we created a friendly competition and the ability to really showcase their sense of pride by showing off how tight-knit their neighbors were. The community needs to see themselves in the content. If we don't communicate well about our programming, it probably won't be successful. So on that note, we created a neighborhood recognition award called the Neighborhood of the Year Award, mirrored after the city of Tallahassee, Florida. So again, this was an opportunity for our neighborhoods to really brag about how great their neighbors were and to see themselves on the city's communication platforms. In our first year, we had over a dozen nominations and saw the community buzzing on social media about which neighborhoods were the best. So this showed us that the community sees Arvada as a city of great neighbors and that they want an opportunity to celebrate that. So you can see on your screen, this is a conversation from Nextdoor, and they're discussing the announcement of the winners of the award. And they say, you know, "It has to be a typo because we're the best neighborhood in the city." And then they said that they were committed to applying for the award in the next year. So beyond having the ability to showcase their neighborhoods, residents were really excited to step up and have a purpose in their community. They were craving outlets to be leaders at a local scale, and this gave them a really easy and fun platform to make their neighborhoods a great place to live. So we introduced specific tools to help them along with this process, and one that we'd like to highlight is the Talent Bank, which we had previously mentioned. So this tool, which you can see on the screen, it's meant to be a conversation starter. It helps neighbors to talk about the needs and resources that may come in handy in the event of an emergency. And it's important to note that your whole neighborhood doesn't need to fill out this tool in order for it to have an impact. What's important is that neighbors are taking the time to talk about potential emergencies and with the people that are closest to them. Together, they're identifying things that they have or things that they need that will help them to survive and thrive. So is there an EMT on the block? Someone that can operate a ham radio? Do you have a neighbor living on an oxygen tank? Neighbors fill out the Talent Bank together, and they collect each other's contact information, and then they put it up on their fridge. So we live in a world where we have busy lives, and luckily, most days, disasters are far from our minds. So in addition to being a conversation starter, the Talent Bank serves as a reminder. By putting a completed Talent Bank up on your refrigerator, you and your neighbors will remember the relationships that you've built and the support that you can provide one another in times of need. So by using the Talent Bank and taking that first step to build capacity within your neighborhood, Arvada residents are becoming superheroes in disguise. The key message that we want you to take away today is that we are in a new era of emergency preparedness and responding to disasters. We need to focus on people and on relationship-building to help our communities recover faster. And this is truly dependent on our ability to build a foundation of trust. So make this personal. This is not a one-size-fits-all approach. That has been the weakness of traditional preparedness programs in the past. Keep in mind that communities need to see themselves in the solution. So tie emotions to it, or people won't invest in it. Tie it to the places that they love, the places that they call home. And if you do all of this, you'll have a more resilient, more prepared community. So now that we've shared our presentation from our NUSA conference, we'd like to share a few quick updates on how we're going to be incorporating these ideas into our programs and our strategies as we're moving forward. So as part of the next city council strategic plan, my team is working to develop a neighborhood engagement plan. And this is for us to take a broader approach to ensuring that all of our neighborhoods across the city are engaged and experiencing that strong sense of community. So this will involve convening stakeholders from across city departments, different partner organizations, and various community groups. A second update is, as I mentioned in the presentation, our Neighborhood of the Year Award. The board is currently accepting nominations, and applications close on Friday. So I encourage all of you to reach out to your community members and encourage them to apply. The winners will receive a mini-grant and a neighborhood identity street sign, as well as recognition at our end-of-the-year neighborhood reception. as recognition at our end-of-the-year neighborhood reception. So I'm going to pass it over to Anessa for the rest of the updates.
Great, thanks, Kreese. So I wanted to mention the Neighbors Connected Leadership Program. So this summer, the city of Arvada received a generous grant from Community First Foundation to support neighborhood resilience in Arvada. The grant monies are funding the Neighbors Connected Leadership Program, and this is a leadership development initiative that's designed to increase the skills of our existing and future neighborhood leaders. So the year-long leadership program starts in October of 2019, so next month, and members of Arvada's Neighborhood Leader Network have been invited to participate. The focus of the program is to sharpen the skills of our leaders so that they can be more effective communicators in their neighborhoods, relationship builders, and resilience champions. So currently, an internal team of staff is developing Arvada's first municipal resilience strategy, and this is part of City Council's strategic plan. It's one of our milestones. The process is being completed in partnership with the Colorado Resilience Office. So we've completed two planning workshops so far on this journey and have been having bi-weekly meetings since July, and our goal is to have the first draft of our resilience strategy ready for feedback by early October. So thank you for your time this evening. We are available for questions now and after. Thank you.
Very good. Opening up for council questions, comments? Ms. Miller?
I would just like to say fantastic job. Really, really great information pulled together in the presentation, well-laid out with all the information about why it's important, and really does make you believe that you need to know every single one of your neighbors' names for many reasons. And it would be really cool for everybody in Arvada to see that presentation. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I'm wondering, have you had many meetings with homeowners associations in their meetings to explain this program?
So I pretty frequently get invited to homeowners association meetings, and they ask for basic updates about the program and the resources that we offer, and that really helps us to walk them through how they can get to know their neighbors and maximize the impact of our programs.
So if an invitation is extended, you'll be there?
As schedule allows, absolutely. I just got two more requests this week.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I want to follow up with what Ms. Miller said. You know, it was an excellent presentation, and like a lot of things that go on with our team here at Arvada, the general public and our citizens just don't get the message. And I know that Ben Irwin's working on, you know, ways that we can better communicate with our citizens to get the good word out there of all the great things that we do do, to have better connectivity of our residents and to look at programs like this. I can tell you that for my neighborhood, we had a great block party this summer as a result of what you all are doing and just the sense of community and the willingness for folks to help each other out. We've got a neighborhood where we've got a great listing that we get all the time of, you know, who does what kind of things and also what other services, you know, like if you need to get your windows washed, who's a good supplier of that kind of thing? And certainly, when we've had snowstorms in the neighborhood, how our various neighbors have gone to help out households that need a little more help in terms of getting their snow shoveled off and stuff. So it's a great program. We just need to get the word out more.
And I will say to that, Anessa and I are really passionate about this work, and we want to share this presentation. So we just need to be invited to do so.
Right. Well, now it's been recorded, so we'll be able to rebroadcast it several times. That's right. Ms. Miller?
Thanks. I was just going to speak to that. So is it possible to create a webinar of what we just, we have the recording, right? So could we put the city logo on there and create a webinar, put it out on YouTube for all of us to share and get out to our networks?
Yeah, we would be able, we could break that out and package it separately, just as you suggest.
That'd be great.
Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we're going to look at the 2020 Revised Budget.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to have Brian Archer lead us in this presentation.
For the next year, we'll have 2020 vision on everything, so.
I don't remember that being our motto, but we can make it our motto. So Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the 2020 Revised Budget. This year, you get to put up with me and Sharon. Last few years, you got to hear from all the department heads, but I drew short straw, so away we go. So tonight, we'll just take a high-level look at proposed expenditure changes. What we're really going to be doing is diving in a little bit deeper upon the budget. If you did have the opportunity to read Mr. Devon's letter, it will recap basically everything we're going to talk to you about tonight. And that is, if you got your book, it's pages 1 through 13. If you don't, you can pull it up online. Second, we'll talk a little bit about our one-time items. We'll show the changes on the 10-year models, and then we'll talk about next steps. And after I'm done, Sharon will come up and talk about utility rates. If you do want further detail on any of these items, if you also reference pages 36 through 38, that shows every individual request. So from a high level, we are proposing to add nine new positions. Actually, eight of these would be new for the budget. One position is a current position that has never been funded, but it is in our position count, and we're asking to fund it. Five of the positions are in the general fund, one of them offset by a reorganization, and four throughout the utilities, parks, and housing, and we'll dive into each one of those here in a little bit. At the general fund level, we did adjust sales tax growth in 2019. We are seeing those numbers come in a little less than we had expected. We had very little increase requested in line items, and we have identified about 343,000 in one-time projects and another 1.5 proposed, and we'll discuss with council if there's money available in the March timeframe. We do have one change from the book itself, and we'll dive into that a little bit later. But the water fund does need to increase the amount that it's requesting by 285,000. That is for a late change by Denver Water. So if you are following along, the total appropriation number is a little higher. That will be reflected on October 7th and again on the 21st, but in your books, that number does not match what you're seeing up on the screen. We take a look at the changes in the general fund. We talked about that sales tax decrease. It's about a $765,000 effect per year. We did adjust auto use, building, and general use. Each of those have changed a little bit since the last time we talked. We were expecting auto use to go down. It has gone down in '17 and '18. We were expecting it to go down again in '19. It is less, but it's not down as far as we had expected. It's starting to recover. We've made that adjustment. Building activity, this adjustment is not related to the activity. It's related to the annual fee changes. So if council remembers, three years ago, and then two years ago, council approved a resolution to make changes annually to the fee schedules. That will also come to City Council on the 21st of October. We are referencing that change in the model, and that is part of that 948,000. The position increases, which we made reference to, there were five of them. Four of them affect the budget. Three are related to the core team, which is in place today. One is related to finalizing the reorganization and creation of the work system related to development. And then finally, we converted an engineering position to a communications position to help with the workload related to communications in and around development. And then some small line items. Only two changes in the parks fund. One is related to an open space position. This was able to be funded by parks because they moved some items around. And then add costs related to the Delta Station and then changes in related to District 2. Every time we expand a new park, we have to make sure that we put the appropriate funding in. That is what these two items are related to. Some changes in the water fund. Two positions, a GIS analyst and a civil engineer. The civil engineer is active today. The GIS analyst will come in play in 2020. Some increases related to line items. Sharon will dive into that, so I won't go any further. And then an increase related to ditch assessments. Finally, three additional positional changes. One in the housing fund. This is the addition of the homeless navigator. This will help the region, and City Council has discussed and been a part of this conversation. This will be funded two years out of the housing fund, and then after two years, reassessed on where, if that's needed, and if it is needed, how it will be funded. An increase in the stormwater fund. This is a regulatory analyst with the changes that are related to the stormwater. And at the federal level, we need to add this position to stay compliant. And then finally, this is the position that I made reference to earlier. This is the assistant banquet manager for the food services fund. This has been in our position count the entire time. What we're asking for is the ability to hire this position, add budget. So in a nutshell, those are the changes for the second year of our two-year budget. We wanted to say that we're trying to keep this and respect that it was a second year of a two-year budget. That was a direction given by Mr. Devon in the city manager's office. I think the department heads did a wonderful job of not requesting any new programs. The only new program you will see up there is around homelessness and around the core and dealing with that in Old Town. So before I move on to the one-time items, any questions on any of those specific items?
One point that, you know, when we see these numbers for individual positions, that salary benefits...
Everything, including salary benefits, training costs, equipment if needed for those various positions. Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to say that.
Thank you. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to clarify on the increase of funding that we will have in the building fund. Those are the inspection fees, and those reflect an updated assessment of the actual cost of the services provided.
That is correct.
So not just simply an increase.
That is correct. Each year, that's compared to various national averages and then a local average, and then the fees are set to offset the costs that it is to maintain that program. And some years, if those costs go down...
Did we agree that that would happen each year, that there would be an assessment, or is it more periodic than that?
No, that was agreed to and put in writing by City Council two years ago.
But it's each year?
Every year during budget time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you're next.
Yeah, it's just a point of clarification. I see when we add, when you say one-time items like this, but I see a couple of software. I mean, are these all programmatic? Are they annual? And do you put them in? And are they always accounted for? Because here, it's one time, so is this...
So what is related here is the one-time implementation cost, and then, once they're put in, we make sure to include any ongoing operational costs in the 10-year model. So the two that you're looking at there, CourtSmart and HR Acuity. CourtSmart would be for an upgrade for this room because it's used as a second court, and the ongoing is already paid for and included in the model. And then the HR Acuity, assuming that that would go forward, the HR staff has identified in their budget how they will pay for the ongoing maintenance.
Okay, let's, thank you very much.
Ms. Ford?
I was wondering if you could give us clarification on the events manager, what that position will entail?
So that's to help support all the events that are currently being operated both at the Arvada Center and at Westwoods and Lake Harbor Golf Course. So they have a banquet manager, and this would be a second person to help with that. That is being accomplished today, either through overtime or hiring an outside temp. So this would be making that position permanent.
And given some of the talks, is that, you know, would hiring a full-time, permanent position be the right timing for that, or...
I think that is a very good question, and I think that will be part of the conversation moving forward, depending on what happens with events. So this would be the permission to do that. Whether Gordon and his team actually does it, we will see.
Very good. I don't see any other questions, so...
Okay, so we'll jump to the one-time items. Councilmember Pfeiffer already identified a couple of them. I won't read them to you. Hopefully, each one of these looks very familiar. They're items that we've talked about either throughout this year or during our previous discussions. The next list are items that are currently up for discussion if we have any one-time funds. The past few years, we've been fortunate enough to have some ability to add these items on in the future. This year, we will see. We will see how we end up the year, and hopefully, we will have the ability to do some of these or at least have the discussion with council. Finally, these are the one-time items for the other funds. You will see the items in green are items that we are moving forward with, and they already have a funding source. The sound system at the Arvada Center in the banquet rooms is much needed and was in play and already had funding. Then the Oracle Advanced Benefits Model will be implemented in the spring, and there's money identified in both the computer replacement and the medical trust to do that. You will notice some other large items on the list, evidence building, possible development loans, and then future maintenance and repairs up at the center. Councilmember Ford, your question on, your earlier question would be the same, or I would assume would be the same, on this building maintenance, and that will be part of the discussions as we move forward as well.
Mr. Marriott, you're next.
I have a question about the police evidence building. Are we far enough along to know what that would be and where that might be, or is that just a rough figure?
It's a rough figure. And there's a lot of different discussions on where that might be, what it might entail, and...
Okay. And is there a reason that wouldn't come out of the tax increment funds?
That is where it is currently...
That's where, oh, I'm sorry. See, right there. One last question. Is that a need that we have right now, or is that related to red flag legislation that's passed, or what's the need for that all of a sudden?
That's a need we have today that's only being added to on a daily basis. So Mr. Devon and Ms. Gillis toured. I don't know if you'd like to tell that story, or...
Well, the police department had Lori and I tour the current evidence building. They took us into the area where a lot of the confiscated marijuana was, and it was quite the smell, I might add, when we were...
And what did your wife say when you got home?
She wondered where I was that afternoon. But honestly, with rules of evidence and keeping evidence available for prosecution and things like that, we are really coming up against our capacity right now. So we're looking at other options for where we might put an evidence building, and the number that you see on the screen is kind of a plug figure for right now. We need to actually kind of hone that in at some point in time.
And none of the need for that is as a result of new legislation? It's, you know, because I mean, it's a big number for something we've been doing in a static situation for a really long time. I understand, you know, things do change, obviously, and all that, but it seems like, boy, that's just a giant step up for a situation that hadn't changed.
You know, John, I wouldn't say it was completely uninfluenced by legislation, but it's not necessarily influenced by any new legislation that's come along recently. I think there's changes over time that are requiring different kinds of evidence storage and making sure that that evidence storage is, you know, available for longer periods of time. In some cases, we're finding it's taken longer periods of time to actually, you know, prosecute a crime or work on prosecuting a crime. So it's related to a combination of that, and frankly, it's also related to the fact that we are a growing city, and as a result, there's more law enforcement activity where we have to take possession of evidence in order to, you know, affect prosecution later.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just need some clarification. I missed the memo on it, but the JPPHA $800,000, is that? Because we approved some funding of $2 million or whatever it was before. Is this in addition to or within that number?
This would be in addition to. This is not a formal request to us yet, but in talking to the JPPHA leadership, there's a possibility that this would come in, so...
Is there going to be discussion on these things?
Absolutely. This has not been funded. These are items that are just...
So that was... So that would be one. And the second is light and rock subdivision. I'd like to understand a little bit more of that as well.
So this relates to the items that are going on up there around.
With the water?
Water, sewer, concrete, pans, et cetera. And this is, has no basis in any knowledge or anything. It was just something that was part of our budget discussion and so it's on our one-time list. If, Councilmember Pfeifer, if you remember, none of these items will get funded until we have an additional conversation with city council. And so while they're up there, these are not in the plan anywhere and they're not in the tenure model. This list is not.
So somewhat.
This list is, this list is, the one that you see on the board right now, the three hundred and forty-three thousand, that's included in the tenure plan. But this one is not. These are all items that are just on our list today.
So they're somewhat placeholders at this point?
I wouldn't even use placeholder as a term.
Not even, okay, okay. Mr. Jones, do you wish to?
No. Just for a point of clarification. So as we go through the process and once CDPH provides their direction on how we are to move forward. There will come a point in time where the authority may ask for additional funding from each member organization. And I think what this is an indication of is a conversation with Mr. Ray to say, here's just looking forward. Have no idea what that number might be, but here's if, something to put in there just as a point of conversation. But you're absolutely right. This would have to come before council to approve if in fact we get to that point.
Okay, that works. And you think after eight times I'd probably have this down, but I don't unfortunately. So these are just placeholders for now and we'll come back and.
Yes.
I think this is the struggle I have is we throw all this out and I feel like it gets moved around where I can't track it. And I can't track where the conversations are coming and going.
Okay.
And so if this is not something you're asking us to approve here in the near future other than placeholders, I don't know if there's a different way to present that. Because to me, I'm seeing budget items starting to pop up of things that we have not discussed yet. And so maybe there's a different way of presenting these.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in more detail with our team. Again, I think part of what we wanted to do is be as transparent as possible and provide you with the potential for, for some sort of a request in the future if funds are available.
But I would also ask that maybe if this is, if there's 1.5 million extra dollars, this might not be where we want to put the money. So instead of this, I, I think we have a gap in our, our streets, which we've always said, why don't we put one-time funds there? And there's other things that are there. And so I think it needs to be an in-depth conversation of how these got there and why and what value they add versus the other items we need to address. So maybe this is the right place, maybe this is the wrong place. I just, I feel like Groundhog a little bit. No wonder Mr. Dyer always seems to get confused up here, or at least I feel like I get confused. But I think there's an opportunity here to maybe improve on this, this portion of it.
Ms. Board?
On the Ask Arvada software replacement, would that be a replacement to help make the navigation easier for constituents, residents?
Yes, it's our, our Ask Arvada software is our customer request management system. And yes, it would be a replacement to make that a better system, more interactive. And I think valuable to our customers who are making those requests. The system that we have right now is pretty much outdated. So this would be a replacement that would be, I think, a lot easier for our customers to use.
Okay, Mr. Pfeifer?
Sorry, Mayor. The light and rock one, I just want to make sure I understand that since it's, since you put it in front of us. Is, are we talking to the builder first before we start putting this money out? I mean, we shouldn't be fixing things.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I just want to be clear that I understand what this, this 1.5 million reserves doing.
Right.
So we're not spending it.
No.
We're just using in case there is a problem up there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions at this juncture, so you can.
So we'll jump into the final piece, which is a review of the tenure models. On July twenty-second, we presented to city council what the tenure models look like when we updated 2018 actuals. And added in what we knew at that period of time prior to any budget requests or any changes made. And so city council, a quick review, compensation was at two and a half percent. Market rate change, we'll hear more about that with the pay plan discussion. Health insurance was reduced from a six percent to a two percent. And we have some exciting news around that. We had changed revenues. We got news that the Cadillac tax related to the Affordable Care Act was pushed out till 2022. And there is some possibility that that may get repealed completely. But we have not removed that, the expenses related to that out of our tenure plan. So that's still in the plan, but it did move out a couple of years. It was 2020. And then we did make some changes to our internal service funds, cleaning up additions that we had made around risk and additional vehicles. Since July, we talked about this, but we updated some revenues. We added the new positions, the core team. Health insurance, looks like the estimate's going to come in maybe at zero for 2020, so that's quite exciting. That number's not in the model. We still have two percent in the model since negotiations are still going on. But that will add back, if it does, to all models. That will help the general fund, the TI funds, parks, et cetera. The pay plan is coming in around 2.98 percent and there'll be more on that later on tonight.
Explain what MRA is.
Market rate adjustment, so. There'll be, Linda and Gabriella will do a much better job than I will on describing that later. And then we did put in a flat year in 2022. So that includes no pay changes for all staff, no steps, no market rates. And that is how we were able to make the general fund balance and all the other funds balance in the tenure financial plan. So that is a few years out, but closer than you would think. We do have some options to adjust that, but that is the changes that are made. And nobody will be able to see that, but.
Brian, before you go on, can I ask you, go back and let me ask you just a quick question about that. So if the Cadillac tax were to take effect in 2022, our response to that, it has been to offer no step or, or wage increases in that year.
Correct.
Are those two things equally offsetting in, in size? Or if the Cadillac tax does not take effect that year?
So were you.
We go to market rate adjustments and steps?
Were you in with the meetings with us before earlier or?
Great minds just think alike.
Yeah, I guess so. They are almost exactly the same. So what's in our model for the Cadillac tax? If that was to go away, we could put the pay increases back in 2022. They're within dollars of each other.
Well, let's have our employees write a letter to the federal government.
Yeah, just, just, just going to comment, there's probably not a better illustration of total compensation versus wages for employees, not of the city, but of everywhere.
Yes.
Of, of, that there is nothing for free, right?
That's right. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay.
So again, I apologize that this might be somewhat difficult.
Yeah, that's really easy to read there, Mr. Archer.
I know, I'm sorry. The most exciting thing to show would be that in each and every year, we cover the seventeen percent council required reserve. While that gets a little bit tight, in 2028, we did just talk about that, the healthcare change. Hopefully that will come in better than we expected and that should add some money to that. And put us more in the million and a half to two million dollar range at the end of that time period. So the model balances and we are looking okay.
Very good. That's the beauty of tenure.
Tenure planning.
Planning.
Correct. Greatest risks, again, we would talk about sales tax, we've talked about this before. If we happen to lose a major business, luckily we're predominantly grocery and gasoline. So even if we did lose a larger grocery store, the, most people will just move over to one of the other ones that are offered in the city. We always have concern around any kind of statewide legislation, tax on food, any kind of changes to filing or any kind of. Anything that the legislation might set down to us. We're lucky enough to have very good representation by you, city council, on many of these items and through CML. And then of course, you've got the all external pressures and the possibility of a recession. But again, Mayor, like you just said, having a tenure financial plan helps us adjust to many of these items and make changes throughout the time. If we move to parks, you will notice before parks had a negative with some of the small changes that we've been able to make. They are now also in the positive, covering up their fund balance goal for every year. If you remember in July, we had presented the police tax increments. One fund had about a two million dollar positive, one fund had about a two million dollar negative. We've worked with the PD and they've moved positions around and some other items. And so both funds now meet their fund balance goal in every year. We're excited that the Delta Station has been completed, opened, paid for. Was paid for out of the increments through very good planning on their part. And so as we continue to move forward, we will look at adding staffing and how we can continue to grow the number of people out at the station. That will definitely be a long-term plan. As you noticed, both of those funds are pretty tight. Won't spend a lot of time on water. Other than to say that in this model does include payments for the start of gross reservoir. And we do feel very comfortable that we should be able to pay for that on a cash basis of everything we know today. That's very exciting. Wastewater, same. There's some pretty large projects coming out in the future. And so part of that looks like that there's a relatively large fund balance. But a big chunk of that money is going to replace a couple of our major trunk lines. And those lines will be replaced in, out, outside of this tenure window, but inside the planning model. And so that's why that fund balance is a little larger than we would like. But it will also allow them to pay for those items in cash and not have to raise rates. The golf course is continually along their way. They have now a year of operations. They're able to reassess and feel very comfortable where they're sitting right now. And they do, by the end of 2028, meet their fund balance goal. As you can see today, they are negative, but they are working towards getting into the positive. Stormwater, Sharon will go a little bit deeper into this, but there is going to be a reassessment. Which will go out and redo the impervious area, which should add some additional funding. Which should help to pay for the position and pay for some of the additional capital costs that they have coming up. They also cover their fund balance goal in every year. Hospitality, as it sits today, is showing a tenure model. Depending on what happens moving forward, we'll be bringing back to you a different model here. But as they sit, they are definitely covering their eleven percent reserve in each and every year. And then finally, the insurance fund. If you remember a couple of years ago, we were, we had gotten hit with some very large claims. There was a one-time influx of money. Knock on something right now, things are going well. And hopefully, if they continue, there actually may end up being an excess in this fund, which we would look at then returning the money that was advanced to the general fund. But we will see how that goes over the next couple of years. So that completes my part of the presentation. Are there any questions for me before I hand it off?
No lights are on?
Okay.
For questions? So let's dive into water.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sharon Israel. I'm the Director of Utilities. Very proud to be here this evening, taking, in Jim Sullivan's, stepping into his shoes. As the Director of Utilities, I'm part of the infrastructure work system, as you know. And this is work that the city does to make sure that we have that backbone of roads, water treatment, stormwater collection. We have the right water supply portfolio that we need to be able to maintain the city. And as such, I'm here today to propose rate increases for our water and wastewater rates for 2020. And what this will do is enable us to continue our culture of reinvesting in our water system as we need to. In a way that's financially prudent, that keeps up with the maintenance that's required. And also passes through certain costs like costs to purchase Denver Water, Raw Water onto our customers. So the proposal before you is to increase water rates by 4.3% next year and wastewater rates by 2.9%. So on average, that total increase for a household is $22.87 or a little less than $2 a month. So if you look at the chart at the bottom of the slide, you'll see that this still puts Arvada well below where our neighbor, many of our neighboring communities are for the total charges for a single-family account. You may wonder why we are able to do this. One comment I'll, I'll make is that Arvada has been very prudent in taking out debt to pay for infrastructure. As Brian mentioned, we're in a position to cash fund gross, the gross reservoir expansion investment that we'll be making. With, over the many years, I think Arvada has been making prudent financial decisions. And so we're just, we're not saddled with the same kind of debt that some of our other neighbors are. Where at the same time, we're still able to make prudent reinvestments and make sure that our infrastructure stays in great shape. So here's a little breakdown of some more detail of what, most of what Brian talked about earlier. So our private, prior year operations budget was 25,419,000. And we're looking to increase that by 5.3% to 26,765,800. The, the subtotal you'll see at the top covers some of those costs that are, are out of our control. So that includes the increases to salary and benefits for our staff. We did experience an 8.8% increase in Denver Water rates. We are a raw water customer from Denver Water. So Denver has several different categories of customers. And in the raw water category, all of us were charged an additional 8.8% for the next year. So we're passing that on to our customers.
That was a bit of a surprise, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, it was a surprise a little less than two weeks ago is when the board, for Denver Water Board, made the decision to increase the rates that much. City Support Services, this line item is for transfer to the general fund to support IT services and other kind of general services for the city that benefit the utility. And then overall, the costs of purchasing supplies and equipment is increasing and so that's that fourth line. So the subtotal is just shy of a million dollars in additional costs that are more or less outside of our control. Then the second subtotal includes two new positions, so those are the ones Brian mentioned. One is a GIS analyst that will increase our capability to make sure we're doing sound asset management. A lot of, the majority of our asset management program is run through the GIS systems. That, that will strengthen our capabilities to, to be able to retrieve information about our infrastructure during emergency situations. As well as do good planning around it for, for future investments. And then the additional program funding of $100,000 is for additional assessments that were charged by the ditch companies. Where we're shareholders and that's, that we receive our water supply through those independently owned ditches. And from time to time, we receive a special assessment to help those ditch companies maintain their infrastructure. So the total increase in our operations budget is $1,346,800. So here's, here's an illustration of the tenure model. We are planning to increase by 4.3% our rates this year with an anticipated 3.0% increase in subsequent years. It balances in large part because we will be paying off debt in 2020. And, and on average, our, over the last five years, we've had a 2.7% increase in water rates. So this year is a, a higher increase, but with the Denver Water assessment, we had to go from a predicted 3.0% increase to a 4.3% increase to pass that along. We still feel very confident that a 4.3% increase will keep us on the sustainable path that we've been on to be able to continue to reinvest in the infrastructure we have. So here are two charts that illustrate a little bit more detail about the water charges for single-family accounts on the left. So this is different than the first bar chart you saw because the first one had a combined water and sewer rate. This illustrates that Arvada is still low in terms of overall water rates, even with the 4.3% increase in 2020. On the right side, you'll see our water fund balance. And you'll see over the next five years, it's drawn down significantly primarily because that cash balance is, been held in reserve for. primarily because that cash balance is, been held in reserve for in anticipation of, of the gross reservoir expansion and we'll continue to plan on having that partnership with Denver Water and pay incrementally as they proceed with their construction costs.
Are we getting any updates on gross reservoir, are we getting close?
So I, I was joined by several of my staff on a special tour of the site just a few weeks ago. So if you haven't been out there, I encourage you to go see their yurt that they have set up for, for customers to come and get some good information about their project. I think they're getting very close on the permitting. When we were there, they had cleared all the permitting except for the Energy Commission because it is a hydroelectric facility, they had a little more permitting to do. So they're proceeding and we're confident that, that they're, they're going to clear those hurdles.
It is, it is an amazing, some of us have been out there and it's, particularly to go out on that dam.
Yeah.
And to think of how much higher it's going to be and the impact it's going to have for, to benefit all of us is pretty impressive.
Yes, it'll be dramatic and it's, it's actually requiring techno, a special technology to actually apply the, the concrete so that it can build on top of the existing dam and be structurally sound. So an engineering marvel, in fact. So I will, before I go into wastewater rates and touch on storm water, are there any questions about the water rate?
We have no lights on, so.
Thank you. So moving on to wastewater rates, a breakdown of our plan to increase by 3% overall budget will translate into a 2.9% increase in rates, partly because we round to the penny. So we'll be increasing salary and benefits here. We have some additional treatment costs because all of our treatment is provided through the Metro Wastewater District. City Support Services, as I mentioned underwater, is that transfer to the general fund and, and then of course, there's some general increases in costs related to the goods and services we purchase. So that'll increase our budget from just under $14 million to $14,315,000. As Brian mentioned too, we've got some large projects in the works that are going to significantly draw down our balances. We've been very successful at lining projects for our sanitary sewer. What that does is it increases the lifespan of that sewer and then it also decreases the amount of water that we have infiltrating into the sewer. So we're making great progress on that but that is helping to draw down our account balance. We also have about $5 million sewer interceptor project that we're, we're planning for. So our expenditures will drop over time and you can see that reflected in the graph that our expenses are going to go down but then incrementally increase as we, we step back up and rebuild our fund. So in this slide, you can see on the left, again, we're a comparison of where we are with our neighbors. We're right there in the middle for a single-family home and the amount that it will cost them for sewer service next year. That proposed 2.9% increase is a $7 annual increase. And, and then you can see on the right side, this, this one gives me a little palpitation when I see it but Jim tells me it's okay. The wastewater fund balance is drawn down significantly but again, we do have some major projects we'll be doing and, and those are vital to maintaining the integrity of the wastewater collection system. After that, we will continue to build our balance back up. So in summary, our proposal this year is a water rate increase of 4.3% and a wastewater increase of 2.9%. Procedurally, you'll see ordinances that reflect this request on October 7th for first reading and October 21st for second reading. And then one final comment I'll make before I conclude and that is we have major projects this year in 2019 where we are assessing all aspects of our utility through master planning. So we've got engineering consultants on board looking at what our capital needs are for our water treatment plants, our distribution system, collection system for wastewater and collection system for, for storm sewer. And what that means is, as a practical matter, I will get the to-do list in the next six to eight months on what each of those aspects of the utility needs in the way of reinvestment. So when we look at the 10-year model, over the next 12 months, we'll be incorporating that new information, be coming back to you in the next year with, with more details about what those needs are. So, are there any questions?
Very good. Mr. Marriott?
This is more of a comment than a question but I think, good for you guys on the water rates thing. If you read into these numbers, what you'll see is, is that I think Denver Water provides us 3/4 of our raw water and that went up by almost 9% but yet the cost to treat and then deliver that water is less than the city of Denver can do it. So we operate more efficiently than Denver Water with all their size and resources and I think that's a great tribute to you and your staff to be able to do that year after year after year and to the benefit of our citizens who are not suffering a 9% rate increase due to the cost of the, of the raw water, the material going up. So thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you.
Very good. Good presentation. Now, Mr. Sullivan's traditionally got this down to three slides. But you did a very nice job.
Thank you.
I understand why we stole you away from the city of Westminster and we've got some Westminster councilors who are still angry at us, so.
Thank you, it's a privilege.
We're thrilled to have you here.
Good night.
Very good. Okay. Thank you all. Do we have a stand-in place? Before we talk pay plan, so while you come down, we'll stretch our legs. Well, we're having an interesting discussion up here of some future council meetings, so it's going to be, stay tuned. Coming to a Channel 8 near you. So we're reconvened and now we're going to talk to Linda Haley and her folks about the pay plan update.
Great. Good evening, City Council. Thanks for your time this evening. As part of the budget presentation that Mr. Archer put together earlier this evening, we're going to dig into a few more details regarding our recommended updates for the 2020 pay plan. I have Gabriella Bomber here, our Deputy Director of HR. She's up in the staff seating along with Rachel Bramblett, our Compensation Analyst. Those two are really the, the brains behind and the expertise behind the establishment of our pay plan so I just want to acknowledge them. Okay. As you all are aware, we do have a total compensation philosophy that guides our strategic decision-making around our pay plan. The three pillars of that involve being an employer of choice, providing a competitive total compensation package. So that even goes beyond our, our salaries that we'll be talking about this evening. It's about our health and wellness benefits, total rewards, if you will, for our employees and all of this trying, the strategic decisions around being fiscally responsible so that we are able to fund these recommendations. Happy to report that, of course, we are budgeting for these appropriately and I also want to make mention that it is time to review our total compensation philosophy. It has been seven years since we put this philosophy into effect. I will talk throughout the presentation about comparisons to 2012, when this philosophy went into effect and then what we plan to do moving forward and I'll talk more about that at the end of the presentation. So our budget recommendations are as follows. We do have budgeted 2.98% for salary range adjustments. That is the market range adjustments that Mr. Archer talked about this evening. So MRA, SRA, one and the same. This is the market-driven approach and what our market is telling us as far as increases are needed for our salaries across the board. Also, part of our recommendations include 0.08% for our reclassifications and regrades, 2.18% for our step increases for a total budgeted increase of 5.24%. So what is our market? As a reminder, we use the Denver Boulder Metro region. Two-thirds of our positions are directly matched to public sector employers only. About a third of our positions, we can find matches in a mix of both public and private sector employers and those private sector employers are those who choose to participate in the surveys. As we've discussed in years past, sometimes that's hard to find private sector data but when we do have it, we try to use it. So with our market analysis, as we look at salaries, the Bureau of Labor Statistics provides what we call the Employment Cost Index and for this year, they are estimating salaries increasing at about 2.9%. More locally, here with Employers Council, they project an increase of 3.1% in our Denver Boulder market and other cities that we are comparing to show a market reporting of anywhere from 3% to 5.5%. Continuing with our market analysis, we, as you know, have a very low unemployment rate and it's been unprecedented low for several months now. Even as of publication of your agenda packets, we got more updated information. So I think in your packet, it said 2.8% for our VADA's unemployment, it's now 2.7%. Colorado is at 2.9% currently, national unemployment is at 3.7%. Back in 2012, our VADA's unemployment rate was 8.2%. So quite the change in seven years. Continuing on, looking at turnover rates, we are experiencing significantly higher turnover in this day and age. That's attributed to a lot of retirements, it's attributed to a very competitive job market and so people are actually leaving. Our percentage for 2018 was 15.9% turnover. About 31% of that, if I recall correctly, was due to retirements but the rest was due to people leaving for other positions in general. Year-to-date, our turnover is currently at 9.8% with about 21% of that being retirements as well. Back in 2012, turnover was far lower at 5.7%. So it's obvious to, to look at this and you look at increased turnover along with a decreased pool of really quality applicants that we want to have working for our VADA means we feel there's an increased importance to really set our wages and our benefits at competitive levels currently.
Linda, are you finding that, I hear about it in other professions where younger people are more inclined to change jobs, not stay at the same place?
Mm-hmm.
Are we seeing that here as well?
We are seeing that and we'll actually get into a topic about our changing demographics in our organization and what that looks like and what the different, different employees have different needs in this day and age and different expectations. So it is far different to expect someone to stay here for the 35 years that we've seen in years past. So part of that 2.8, 2.98% salary range adjustment budgeted cost is a breakdown of the specifics in our recommended increases for particular job families. So 2.5% is recommended for the executive level, management, information technology, professional and labor trades, crafts and utilities job families. 3%, so slightly higher, we're looking for, for our technical and business support job family and 3.5% for the police job family. Those two job families in particular are experiencing ongoing increased competitive job market positions. So it's, the, the market is pushing those salaries higher. People want those positions and there's not enough people to go around to fill those positions. So talking about police, I wanted to give you an update on the changes that we made with your support last year. If you recall, we were able to change the, the specific compensation, so the pay philosophy for the police department, changing it so that we could compete with the largest and most competitive agencies in all of Colorado, not just the Denver, the Denver Boulder Metro area. So this would include places like Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, those kinds of agencies where we can compete more readily with them using full ranges of salaries versus just actual pay in the market. Also was, gave us an ability to increase our ranges and add the ability to hire our police officers who we require a degree from at a higher wage, enabling us to compete better. We also created a master police officer position that the police department will be ready to launch in 2020 with the expectation that there will be about a dozen senior officers that could qualify for that designation. Obviously, that will help in the ability to retain those really quality senior mid-level officers and help our junior officers with mentoring and coaching program from this master police officer position. And then also with your support, we added that additional 2% retirement contribution. We were able to get some feedback from our command staff in the police department saying that this coupled with their really targeted marketing efforts for police recruiting has helped substantially, so we thank you for your support. Last year at this time, we had over 20 vacancies for police officers. This year, right now, we're just sitting at three with the intention of filling those very soon. Other changes that are detailed for you in your packets include 24 reclassifications. Quick reminder on reclassifications, those are driven by internal changes maybe to the structure of the particular working group. The job duties of that position change significantly over time, warranting the need to reclassify it in some way and that's either up or down. Regrades are market-driven, so pure market data is looked at for particular positions and the market tells us over a period of time, that position needs to either go up or down due to market demands. And we've got 13 position title changes, as Brian had mentioned to you earlier, nine new positions with one eliminated position. So step increases, again, part of our total budget for the pay plan. This is our way of rewarding our employees for their ongoing performance, increased knowledge and contributions to the organization. So during their annual evaluation periods, those that are eligible, currently we've got 73% of our non-sworn and 52% of sworn employees who are eligible for step increases in 2020. That is budgeted at a cost of 2.18% for step increases.
Mr. Marriott's got a question for you.
Yeah.
I have a question about the percentage of employees available for step increases. That seems like a very large percentage.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, have we tracked each year what percentage of our employees are eligible for step? And what's it normally average?
So it is changing and the reason being is because we've had so many retirements in the last several years. So many of those people who retired were topped out in their steps so they would not receive step increases anymore. If the market changed for those positions, they, they would get their salary range adjustments but the performance step increases, they were topped out. So at the top of their range, no more steps to be given. Now that we've replaced all those retirees with new hires, generally those are hired lower in the range so they have years to move through the step system to then top out. So that gives us the larger percentage of employees who are now eligible for step increases versus in the past, even two years ago.
Can you give us an idea of what, how, how big of a difference that is? Just the magnitude of the, the number of them available this year versus a normal year or typical year?
I would say when we had, I, I would compare it to... I would say when we had, I would compare it to pre-retirement tsunami and post-retirement tsunami. And I don't have those numbers available right now, but this is typically what we've been seeing for the past couple of years now.
See, it seems like a lot. It seems like that, that, you know, that's three out of every four city employees is available, is eligible for a step.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's like that every year, that's a, you know, that's a significant amount of steps. I guess the assumption would be that the, when that person retires and the next one moves up, the person hired at the bottom is hired at a lower wage than the one who retired.
Right.
And so there's savings there, and this is just giving that back over time.
That's right. Be happy to provide some more data to you as a follow-up.
No, it's not necessary. I just, I was just taken aback by that, that large number and wondered what, what is a typical year? What would it typically be?
Yeah. Well, now I'm curious as well, so I will find out.
Yeah, let's pull a pre-retirement tsunami number so that we can have that comparison.
Yeah, happy to.
I'm curious of that, too. Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Mm-hmm.
So, so if we, I'm looking at Gabriella's presentation. When his presentation from 2017, and that number was 66%? So that'll give you a rough idea. So that was two years ago. I don't have anything before that.
So in summary, our recommendations, we feel are supportive of our current total compensation philosophy. Our pay ranges are adequately aligned to our market, and the city continues to maintain a competitive position while remaining fiscally responsible, as all of these requests, as you know, are fully budgeted. So looking ahead, as I mentioned, with our total compensation philosophy and our changing demographics in the city, 2012 was the last time we updated the philosophy. Experts do suggest that we review it every five to seven years to stay aligned with our changing business strategies. As a recap, since 2012, we had 144 employees retire from the city of Arvada. That's significant. Turnover increased from 5.7% to 15.9%. Unemployment is down from 8.2% in 2012 to 2.9% currently. Millennials have officially taken over, and Generation Z is on its way. So looking at these charts, it'll show you, the demographics that we had at the city of Arvada in our organization in 2012 are on the top. The baby boomers were, it's hard for me to read that, but it looks like 53% of our organization were baby boomers. We had just 14% millennials and 33% of Generation X employees. Our makeup of our organization today, the baby boomers are just now 25%, if I see that correctly. So half of what they were seven years ago, while the millennials have more than doubled from what they were seven years ago. Generation X, that's me. That's our, our gang. We're still holding strong at 33%, but millennials clearly take over in the next five to eight years as well, along with Generation Z. Generation Z are those people who were born in 1995 up to 2015. If you were born in 1995, you are now 24 years old, and you are in the workforce. And so, as you can see. We need to pay attention to this, and we have been paying attention to this. With a completely changed demographic in our organization means we need to pay attention to what it is that our current employees expect and want from their employer. And that's why it's important that we take the time to really take a look at our total compensation philosophy, along with all the internal and external changes that have happened since 2012. And I gave you our, our turnover and unemployment statistics and even the amount of retirees, but think about things that have happened externally, such as, you know, the legalization of marijuana. That really does have an impact on being able to find good employees. How are we looking at that in this day and age? Looking at other legislation that has passed, Colorado just passed the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. That takes effect 2021. We need to ensure that we are looking at those potential impacts as an employer. You know, internally, we've done so much in the last seven years. We created our focus measures. We're now in work systems, along with our council priority areas, things that didn't exist prior to 2012. So looking at all of that collectively is really important, and we will take the time we need to do this, and we will make sure that we keep you informed as we progress. Our plan, thanks to Gabriella's leadership, is to start this total compensation study this winter and extend through 2020.
Very good. Mr. Fiver?
Great job, Linda.
Thank you.
I actually, I don't think I have any comments to share. Usually, I'm like more, 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 and, you know, it's nice to see the innovative approach all coming together.
Thank you.
So I, two things. One, I would, I would say, let's keep working on innovative approaches to retain our employees and find new ones. You're right, the demographics of millennials, I deal with that at work. I'm a next Generation X as well. It's a different world, and they look at a different way of, of work environment. So I would be interested in how we progress through that mind shift. And then to continue to look for innovative ways to make the total compensation, you know, work for, especially around our police officers. I think that was great that, I can't, I don't know who came up with the master police officer, but that was a great, I'm assuming there's a bump in pay in that, that role. But trying to find little innovative nuggets to, to retain our, our employees is awesome.
Absolutely.
The, the last thing I would have is, do we have, have we ever thought of putting a goal around churn? I don't know if that's something we should or shouldn't, but be curious, because that can, can drive those behaviors to look for innovation and new compensation and stuff if we set a goal at, at the churn rate. Just a thought.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Linda.
Thank you.
And your team.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
So I have a couple of questions. I want to start it with a, an observation. You were saying last year, we were down 20 positions within our police or something like that, and now we're fully employed or nearly fully employed.
Right.
And working on that all the time. And I look at, view that through the lens of a workshop we had earlier this summer, which was around recession planning. If, if we do actually have a recession, you know, what, what do we do as a public agency? And the, the takeaway I had from that workshop was, is that really, as a local government, we have very limited ability to raise revenue. In, in my business, we can have a sale and raise revenue if we need to, but as a government, we really don't have much in the toolbox to raise revenue. And so our recession efforts would all come on the expense, the expense side or the expenditure side.
Right.
And most of the expenditures from the city of Arvada, that $230 million budget, is employee costs. It's compensation for employees. And so it brings me to, we had a number of years historically where our police force was not at full strength because we just weren't able to hire quick enough and get into, you know, get online quick enough and with the, the lateral transfers that were happening within that profession. So the question I would have is, when we're looking at this total compensation and all, and I know the voters in Arvada pass this, but how, it seems to indicate to me that there's some ability for us to have vacancy savings within the police side. I'm sure that there's a positive to having a fully-staffed, 100% force within the police force, but there also seems to be like we did it without full, without being fully employed there, fully forced up. Is there a time when we, or will the city manager, Mr. Devon, would you guys look at, you know, what is the appropriate amount of, of, not just police, but, but in every job classification in the city? What is the, the, how do we know we have the, the right amount and not too many? And I think it's apparent when we have too few of any type of, of an employee, but, but how do we know that we don't have too many? And is it prudent for us to, to look at that and try to deal with that proactively rather than wait till we do have a recession, which we will certainly have someday? I, I wouldn't speculate on when, but we will certainly have someday. But deal with it proactively rather than waiting till we have a recession and then have to react to that and, and, and go through, you know, really cutting, cutting things, cutting expenditures back to be able to deal with a recession.
If you don't mind, I think one answer to that, Mr. Marriott, is we do look at that on an annual basis, at, at least, through workforce planning. Every department does need to go through what their workforce plan looks like, which is, what does our workforce look like today? Are we well-equipped, trained, developed enough? Do we have the right people in the right jobs? Do we even have the right jobs in order to meet our business goals in the next two to six years, for example? So that should also prompt people to say, which I know we've encouraged for years now, even when we have vacancies, to stop and take a look, do we truly need to fill that again? So it's a process that goes all the way through Mr. Devon to ensure that that, in fact, is something that continues to need to be justified. So both short-term, when a vacancy happens, that hiring manager needs to take a look at and say, is there another way to potentially use that position? It's maybe vacant for a while, or do you know for sure you have to fill it again? End list why. And then more strategically is through the use of workforce planning on an annual basis. Would you?
Absolutely. And I would, I would offer one example where we did that in the city manager's office at the highest level, and that was when we made the intentional decision to not fill the second deputy city manager position. That was a, a position, or a decision that we made based on workforce planning, based on the assessment of the incumbent at that point, Mr. Ray, and his responsibilities to the Jefferson Parkway, and then, you know, allowing our office to reassess whether that's something that we could decide not to, not to fill. And, and many of the other, all the other departments do that when they, when they look at, at positions that become vacant. They also look at it in terms of technology changes and other things along those lines that might require a change. Actually, in, in, in the budget that we proposed, an engineering position was repurposed to be a communications position within Public Works that would allow our, our team there, the engineers there, to focus their energies on engineering projects and have a communicator able to communicate to our public regarding engineering projects and someone who can speak the language and, and be focused on engineering. So it's, it's something that's ongoing literally all the time. Sometimes it results in a, in a position being deleted. Sometimes it results in a position being repurposed or maybe transferred to another area or something along those lines.
All right. Okay, good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thanks for reminding me of that. I, I think it's good for an organization to, to be constantly looking at that, constantly trying to be efficient. You know, if we, we're going to spend all the money annually anyway, at least, if we look at it over time. But the effects of an up and down economy, it's much easier to reduce expenditures on, you know, some capital projects or, or things like that, that those, some of those schedules can change more easily than somebody's livelihood.
Right.
You know, somebody, an employee who's, who's, who's working. So I'm glad we're, we're looking at that. Let me ask you another question. You mentioned we're going to be looking at our total compensation philosophy, and you're going to start that off with some staff work here at the end of the year and proceeding into 2020. Do you have any idea when we might see that here in, on kind of our city council level? Because I would imagine that that's something that we will adopt as a policy at some point.
Right. We want to keep you informed throughout the process, and as we're just beginning to put some ideas and timelines and, and launching this, I'd like to speak with Mr. Devon and get an idea of expectations on how best to keep you informed and work with you throughout 2020.
Okay. And then I want to ask one last thing, and that's, one of the things in the, the public sector that, you know, it's kind of always been the, when I think of public sector work, it's always been kind of the, the give and take, which was that you maybe accepted slightly less pay, but you got better benefits. It was kind of the conventional wisdom of, of that. When we look at, I know we, we look very carefully at our pay structure, what we're paying, and we use the private sector as a comparison, as well as the, the public sector as a comparison to help determine what each of these positions should be paid and what their step should be and, and whatnot. Do we do the same with the benefit side of the total compensation? Because I know we, we typically, I think our benefit side is kind of the same for all city employees, but yet, you know, some of those jobs in the private sector would yield very different benefits from others. And so how do we do that? Do we kind of take an average over that, or do we give the benefits, the richest benefits and everybody just gets that, you know? And, and then is that differential, differential in benefits on the private sector, is that factored into the pay side at all, or is the pay side really segregated and just the pay side and the, the benefits are just on the other side?
They are segregated to the, the degree that, where pay and salary truly does give us valid market data in which to use. The benefit side is not as, as clear-cut. And our approach and our, our philosophy with benefits is to ensure that we're providing the benefits that our employees want. So what the city of Arvada employees want as a culture, as an organization, may be very different from either some other local governments. Doesn't mean we don't use other local government data to compare and see what it is as far as the benefits package that they have, but we do a lot of research and a lot of work with a benefits consultant that we utilize and partner with on an ongoing basis to give us some of the best practice type of data, not even, not just locally, but nationally as well. What are the trends for our new demographic of employees? What are they looking for in their benefits? So we really try to tailor it to the workforce that we have, while also comparing ourselves to others in our area so that we can maintain that competitive advantage.
Okay. So I'd ask one thing then, if we could, when we get on to the total compensation philosophy and that starts coming to us on city council, if we can make sure we include the benefits part of that, too?
Of course.
Not just the compensation, but not just the pay, but, but the benefits? So we can look at that compensation in total and not look at just one side?
It absolutely will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Haley, you're doing a fantastic job, as is your entire team. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And I say, give 100% of them step increases, pay them the best, and give them the best benefits, because retaining employees is much cheaper than hiring new ones. I think what you guys are doing with the Leadership University and Arvada U and all of the things that you guys are doing, the Ninjas, fantastic. I, I have found in, in organizations that I work with that young people want that professional development and leadership development, and I think that offering that to our young people is just a great benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty soon, we should pay for their college, too.
Thank you.
On that note, I'll call upon Mr. Fiver.
I completely agree with what Dot just said. So there's two. I, I want to chime back in on this, because one concern I have, if we talk about, you know, any reduction or not backfilling, there's a, there's a level of service that has been provided, and, and sometimes we don't always link, and I'm saying we, it's probably here, linking the level of service that's expected, goals, golden thread, down to staffing levels and performance levels. So I, I would be very careful that, you know, before we even hint any type of, any type of change on a speculation of a recession in two months or two years or 20 years, we need to be very thoughtful, because I feel, and there's no proof, but I'm sure that when we were down 20 officers versus now, the service level that alone with our police department, it, to me, is noticeable just me being in the community. So where we are today is what I've always expected the police department to do and be visible and be engaged in response times and, and do the things that they're supposed to be doing. I'm not sure I felt that a year, two years, or three years ago when we were short-staffed. So I think we need to be careful with a discussion of positions, and then what do we put on you as staff to achieve? And if you don't have the people to do it, you've got, you've got to tell us this. You know, you've got to tell us, hey, we can't do that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Good discussion, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing your recommendations in terms of, of philosophy as we move forward. But the information you've provided us in terms of your recommendations makes sense. We'll have a full public hearing on that coming up here shortly.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And now we'll move on to our last workshop of the evening, City Council Policy on Naming of Public Spaces and Facilities.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a bit of a, of a, of a do-over. We presented this policy to you back on May 12, 2014, and the response that we received from the council that evening was that we should go ahead and finalize the document, present the policy for final approval at a, at a future business meeting. Unfortunately, we did not implement your direction. We apologize for that. When we discovered the oversight, we consulted with the person who has been the inspiration for many council policies that have come forward to you, and that would be Council Member McGough. And after consultation with Council Member McGough, we decided we should bring it back to you for a review tonight and ask for your direction. So the presentation was scheduled So, the presentation was scheduled for tonight. And as we, as we discussed back in May of 2014, we posed a couple of questions to you, such as, should the naming of the facility or public space have a finite period of time attached, or should the policy state that the city council is the right to take the, the name off? Should you name it after somebody? And under what circumstances could a city asset be named after a living person? Now, those are a couple of questions that we thought we should pose to you, but what we really wanted to do was seek your feedback tonight, and assuming that you would want to move forward with this, we'll make sure we schedule it for an upcoming business meeting.
Very good. First, I want to thank Mr. McGough for bringing us some closure on some items before you leave the council, so thank you. Mr. McGough, would you like to start us off?
Yes, I'd like to just speak to the, uh, the council policy. It's unique in a sense that it is a companion policy to an administrative policy signed off on by the, uh, city manager. So, the city manager's policy talks about the internal process that will be taken for people to bring forward the proposed naming of a public facility. So, the internal, and that's really not our concern, and how, except in general, to say, how, how will it happen if somebody wants to put a name on a park, for example, or change the name of a park? What's the process they'll go through internally? The policy that we have before us really has three, three major points in my judgment. The first is that the naming remains in the sole discretion of the city council. Secondly, that, as Mr. Devon mentioned, the name that given to any of these public facilities, whatever, are not in perpetuity, and so that, once given, it can be retracted or changed. And the third thing is, under procedure, the third point, where there are listed that of several criteria that the council will take a look at when a name is brought forward to us, and those are, what is the name, the rationale, the level of community involvement in it, et cetera. So, there's the criteria that are kind of outlined. These are not prescriptive, they're more suggestive to say, these are what we'll take a look at before we come to a final conclusion. So, I think our policy is a great companion to the internal administrative policy that would come to us from the city manager's office.
Okay, well, this came to us tonight in terms of getting the documentation on it. I guess my thought would be for council to review this, let you know if we have any questions or concerns, and then get it scheduled for final implementation, since it's been a while since we've seen it. Very good. Mr. Fiver?
I just want to thank Mr. McGough. You've done these over the years, and this really helps us sometimes when we're new on council. I think this was a discussion, if I remember right, it was around Britton Park and the other one at one point.
Yes, basically, we utilized the policy at the, with the naming of those two parks at that time, Britton and, what's the other one, at Fifty Second and Carr? But, uh, so we pretty much utilized the policy, but we had not put it down in, or had not signed off on it in a resolution.
And I'm sure one day, we'll see your name pop up in front of us to name something after you, Mr. McGough.
Very good. Any other council questions on this? So, if I can ask everybody to review it and get direct comments back to, to Mr. Devon, and then we can certainly have a, a discussion at whatever time you bring it forward for implementation. Hopefully, it won't be five years from now. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Devon, tonight?
Uh, no, thank you. The only other thing I would mention is, just a reminder, we, we didn't touch on it as part of Brian Archer's presentation, but first reading for the ordinance to adopt the budget will be on October seventh, and then the public hearing and adoption of the budget is scheduled for October twenty-first.
Very good. And a reminder that we do not have a meeting next Monday night. It's the fifth Monday of the month, which, so, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.